Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, January 9, 2017, to order. The time is 7:02. All members of this board are present. I'd like to start out by extending a sincere well wishes to everyone here and at home for a very happy new year in 2017. This is our first meeting of the year, and I know we're all super excited as a board to move right into the year at hand. And to, I couldn't think of a more fitting and appropriate way to begin the meeting, by asking all of you to please rise as we pledge allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 25, 25A, 26, 26A, 27, 27A, 28, and 28A. Questions, comments, or motion, please?
Motion so moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for January 25, 2016. And we have one set of minutes to approve. At this time, I'm assuming all board members have had an ample opportunity to review these minutes. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I would move to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Well, abstain from the vote since it was the January 25th.
Sure.
That we weren't on it.
Michael, you all say?
You're yes. Okay, so three, four, and two abstained, please. Thank you. All right. So, moving on to our first appointment, we are running a few minutes behind at 7:04. It is the report on the meeting with the Legislative Delegation regarding New England Trans Rail. To assist with that discussion, I'd like to turn the floor over to our town manager, Jeffrey Hall. And I would offer some comments, and I certainly would welcome my colleague, Selectman McCoy, to offer any comments, as the three of us were in attendance for that meeting. And certainly, every member of the board will have an opportunity to talk on the matter and ask any questions you deem appropriate. And obviously, if anyone in the audience has any questions, I'd be happy to recognize you as well. Okay, so Jeff?
Yes, this meeting was held on December 15. It was actually organized by Kate Machet, who is the Regional Director at, from Senator Ed Markey's office. So it was held in Boston, as the Chair indicated. Selectman McCoy and Chairperson O'Connell attended along with myself. And we had a full complement of representatives from our, both our Congressional delegation and our state delegation, representatives from Senator Warren's office, Congressman Moulton's office, Representative Moselli, State Senator Bruce Tar. Also, there were representatives from the Woburn Congressional delegation as well, Senator Ken Donnelly, their state senator, and then Mayor Scott Galvin from the city of Woburn. The intent of the meeting, as you know, was to really point out the seriousness of the issue with NET and to strongly encourage our Legislative Delegation to take whatever steps they deem appropriate to try to influence the process with respect to NET's efforts to obtain approval from the Surface Transportation Board. My sense was that the Congressional delegation was very supportive and receptive to the comments that were made. We did bring along a couple of aerial maps, which I think were really helpful in illustrating specifically the area that's impacted, the proximity to residential areas. And we made a number of, I thought, very important points, one being that this area has already been traumatized, if you will, by a superfund site to then again allow for this kind of a trans-loading facility. Just adds insult to injury. We did not get any specifics in terms of action that the Congressional delegation will be taking. One of the points that Kate Machet made was that one of the advantages that the delegation has is that they're not constrained by the comment deadlines that we are, so that they have a little bit easier or easier access to both commenting on some of these issues that come forward. But the expectation is that the delegation will be meeting separately, and I would expect to be hearing from probably Kate in the near future about the steps that they're looking at taking.
Thank you. So I would just add to that, that everything that the manager had stated is in fact true. I certainly would like to compliment Jeff for his presentation. Jeff took a lead role in terms of presenting the map illustrations that he spoke of, as well as the major key points and delivery message that we wanted to get across to the entire group of people. Certainly was a packed house. Kate did take the lead on that, as Jeff indicated. I felt hopeful in coming out of that meeting, that everyone in the room certainly was on board with not being in support of the project and wanting to do whatever they could as either a supporting neighbor or a member of our support team for the town of Wilmington and seeing that this project would not go forward. In fairness, Kate indicated that they needed to do a little bit of further research and get some additional documentation. Also, too, there are going to be some changes in office, obviously, in January of 2017. So she wanted to be sure that there would be a seamless transition with any new personnel that were coming into any respective offices to make sure that nothing fell through the cracks and that there was going to be an orchestrated timeline of communication moving forward. So I certainly want to echo the sentiments of what the manager has stated, that it was a very positive first step. I feel that all the major issues and major points were made. But at the same time, I don't want to overstate the point that we still do have a lot of work to do in terms of working collectively as a community to try and do all we can to see that this project doesn't move forward. There are still many things that need to happen for this to in fact be the case. So I think it was a real important first step, but we're not out of the woods yet. And I remain hopeful that we'll continue to work with the respective people involved and see this through to a final outcome. So, Mr. McCoy, did you want to offer anything else?
Yeah, if I could, thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair and the Town Manager stated, we, all three of us did drive into town to talk to our Congressional, our delegation. And I just want to give a little history of it to that party. I was on board back in 2003, and I said, your predecessors, Senator Ted Kennedy and Secretary of State, then Senator John Kerry, and then the Senator now, but the Congressman was Ed Markey back then, they were all on the same page. So they were trying to do what they could do to try to kill this thing. And as the Chairperson said, we all did go in there as a complete team. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, we don't know half the constituents that are under the ground. MRSA, which is that chemical that Erin Brockovich, about that movie, that story, that's in the water. And we also had to shut down five of our nine drinking wells back then. That perhaps back then was perhaps one of our greatest natural resources. We used to sell water to other communities as well. So I just wanted those folks, other than with the Chairperson and Manager stated, to know the history. And don't forget, you know, that's in our backyard. Wilmington did take the leadership role in that. The Town Manager, I thought, did a fantastic job in that, but it's in our backyard. And I know our neighbors aren't in favor of it as well. And once again, as the Manager stated, it was a superfund site. And in the essence of this whole thing, we're looking for less contamination, not more. By bringing New England Trans Rail, we're just adding more contamination to that site. And it's insane to think that they could even approve this. And it's too premature right now. So I just wanted to give that little history, that the past was, we were in opposition, the former Town Manager, et cetera. And I thought Jeff did an outstanding job in taking a leadership role in this. And I think the message is very loud and clear to our Congressional delegation and our U.S. Senators, that, you know, there's no way we want to see this in the town. No way.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from any other board members? Start to my left.
Yeah, a question that really won, that's related, it's all related to Surface Transportation Board, which, as we all know, is a federal agency. In terms of the next steps, what was her name, Ms. Manchet, is that her name?
Machet.
Machet, okay. So, did she indicate what the delegation's next steps would be? Or were they going to caucus and determine what those next steps would be? Is there a desire or an intent on their part to speak and work directly with the STB and then get back to us? Or what do we expect that their steps are going to be?
The understanding that I had was that they were going to meet amongst themselves and develop an approach. And then, in fact, I have a call into Kate, a call into her last week, we weren't able to connect, but looking to get a status on where things are at this point. But I think they need to get together as a delegation and come up with a game plan.
Something you said that kind of, I hadn't thought of it until this evening, which is there is a transition of some authority and powers, lack of a better word, at the federal level with Mr. Trump coming in. And I don't know who the Executive Director of the STB is, or whether or not that person will be subject to a transition as a part of the transition of power at the top of the federal level. So that concerns me a little bit, because irrespective of one's position on Mr. Trump, the fact is he's pro-business, and it's likely that if he were going to make a new appointment to someone in the STB, he would probably, he would likely put someone in there that's going to be more pro-business than they, than, and less inclined to be aware of or respectful of environmental issues. And I don't want to overstate the politics of it, but that concerns me a little bit under the circumstances. You know, we've made some headway. I feel like we're, we get the ball rolling, we got the Federal delegation on board. But, you know, hopefully, we don't run into a brick wall associated with someone who says, "No, no, we're going to push business and we're going to push rail." You know, so I don't know if you've got a vibe on that at all.
Well, I would say that, first of all, I thought, in my estimation, that Kate was a very astute woman who had a very firm grasp on how to get things done. She orchestrated that meeting and had that room packed with every key person in less than two weeks and had that meeting happen. So that's a credit to her. She was very candid about the transition that she expected, and she did speak of President-Elect Trump coming in. She was very clear that she wanted to make sure that there was some synergy and some effective communication between the Boston team and Washington, and making sure that everybody was on the same page. In addition, she wanted to do proper research on all of the documents. So to Jeff's credit, he made sure that he left all of the illustrative maps with her. In addition, he had a full set of all of the comments that our legal team in Boston put together that was submitted as part of the comment period. So we made sure, or Jeff made sure, that there were full sets of documents to be given to Kate as well. And then in addition, Michael Woods had a very compelling memo that was included as well. So Jeff put together a very detailed information package that was left with them, and then obviously, we went into the holiday season, so I would expect that there was some break in that as well. And I think, to Jeff's point in reaching out last week, I think in the next few weeks, we'll start to hear something. I walked out of there, characterizing that meeting as a very promising first step, but I wouldn't want to overstate the outcome of that meeting.
Yeah, there are some unknowns. But no, thank you very much for going, first of all, and for, you know, I think the insistence that this board had in communicating to our representatives that this was worthwhile, of this level of a meeting, was, it was, you know, necessary and important, and I'm awfully grateful that you folks went, and thank you for the update on it.
Sure. And two, I appreciate those comments. Two things that I think Jeff really conveyed in a very respectful manner was that there was some ambivalence, I'm not speaking for his feelings, but just in general, about the comfort letter that was issued. And then also, speaking to the fact that it's of people's understanding that STB is supposed to be promoting rail, and yet they're reviewing this application. And how can they be unbiased, so to speak, in reviewing this, but at the same time supposed to be promoting rail? Just seemed like a fundamental disconnect. And Jeff put it more eloquently than I'm doing right now, but it was clear that we had some concerns overall as to who's making the decisions on this and what's driving people's motivation. And quite frankly, in the end, I just came right out and said, "We need your help." And in 10 years or nine years of me being in public government, I've never made a trip to Boston to ask for anything. This means that much to families and homes and residents. People have passed away from this, people have been sick from this, people's livelihood in their homes and their quiet enjoyment in their neighborhoods are going to be, have been, and are going to continue to be directly affected by this. And it's just not a proper use of the land. And I just came right out in a very humane way and said, "We're asking for your help. Please help us." And it was that, it got to that level.
Good. Well handled. Thank you.
Anything over here?
No, you've answered everything that I've had questions on, and I just want to thank the three of you for taking the time to going in there and representing us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to thank the three of you for representing us. It sounds like you guys are very thorough, very effective in what you did, and I appreciate you representing us. And certainly, I'm just glad to see that all of us are on the same page with this. This is how appropriate, this is one of the first things that we're talking about in 2017 and how important it is. And I appreciate the sense of urgency here on this issue, because it's not something that just affects that neighborhood, it affects all of Wilmington and our neighbors in Woburn. So, thank you for representing us there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just add that I found it very, I was very appreciative of the fact that Mayor Galvin took the time out of his schedule to personally be there, and he did speak to the delegation, expressed one of their concerns being the traffic impacts. So, again, to have the mayor there as well as the delegation from Woburn, I think only amplifies what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I was particularly impressed with that, because he fought traffic to get there, he changed his schedule, and the focal point was Wilmington. And, you know, he certainly played a very integral role in being there. He's the mayor of Woburn. However, you know, he basically, his heartfelt message was that we want to be a very good neighbor to Wilmington. We do not want to see this happen for them, and we don't want to have the residual impact of what it's going to mean for Woburn. But he certainly was there to have his face and his voice be heard at the meeting. And, you know, he turned around and went right back home to Woburn, but he made a point to come in for us, and I think that that speaks volumes for a neighbor.
Was he invited by you, Jeff?
Yes, I had contacted him as part of the outreach.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anything else, Jeff?
I think we're good.
Okay. All right.
Obviously, you'll continue to keep us, and we'll see communications that come out, will come through our packets and we'll have updates periodically.
Right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to communications.
The first item under communication deals with a series of letters, and I'll just go through them, highlighting them. The first is a letter to Sean Williams, former Supervisor of Records at the Secretary of State's office. This is from Town Council. In this document, he is appealing the school committee's failure to provide additional information about the separation agreement. So this is, activates that appeal on behalf of the town. If you recall, there was an initial public records request made on behalf of the board. The response was that the information, well, it was actually, there was a redacted copy of the separation agreement, and so this, at the board's request, the response has been appealed. The second item correspondence related is from Rebecca Murray, who is the new Supervisor of Records. She confirms she was in receipt of the appeal from Town Council, and Attorney Stefan Shori has been assigned to review the appeal. That was dated the 27th of December. And then also dated the 27th of December is a correspondence from Rebecca Murray, again, Supervisor of Records. This is directed to Superintendent Benton, indicating that she is requiring that the school department provide a in-camera record, essentially a copy of the separation agreement without the redactions for their review. And then finally, there's a correspondence from, from Superintendent Joanne Benton to me, and this is in response to a public records request that I had filed, again, on behalf of the board, seeking minutes from the executive session of the school committee on October 3rd. And in her response, she references certain provisions of the general laws as well as court cases, indicating that because, because the separation agreement runs through June, the information that is within the executive session cannot be released at this point.
May I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
All right. So, thank you. Forgive me, my ignorance. There's a lot of legalese in the letters, and the dates of the letters, in some cases, they hit, there are dates, two different letters, but dated the same date. But then there's another letter from the 29th, which seems like it supersedes or somehow is answering a question from the 27th. At the end, after all these letters, where are we? Can we sum it up?
Yes. So in the, there's actually two different issues at play here. One is the records request made for additional information from the redacted separation agreement. That, at this point, based upon the direction of the board and Town Council's letter, the Supervisor of Records is, has requested or required that the unredacted document be provided, and the Supervisor of Records or their representative is reviewing whether there is additional information that can be made available as a public record. And then, separate from that, is the request for minutes to the executive session that was held on October 3rd. At this point, as I indicated, the response has come back from the Superintendent, interim Superintendent, that because of certain case law and general laws, that they are not able to provide that information.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to say, I agree with everything what the Town Manager said, and basically, there's two words we need to use, "Stay tuned." I think this is somewhat of a victory to the Board of Selectmen, because when they're talking about the unredacted information, that's the black lines, folks. Right above there, it's just the financial agreement. So so far, we're waiting to hear the decision of the, it's the, yeah, the Supervisor of Public Records. So basically, we're just waiting on them. So they're asking to see that. So I think we're moving in the step, moving into a step of the right direction here. It's going to be slow, but I think we're going to get pretty much what we want at the end of the day. Thank you.
I would also add to that, in regards to the records of the executive session, you know, I'm under the understanding, it wants to, everything has been signed and completed, that the executive session minutes should be made available. So is this something that we would be willing to appeal to, instead of just taking the fact that they're not available to us until June of 17?
Says we have the right to appeal, right?
There is a right to appeal, right.
Do we need to vote on doing that? Or can we appeal?
We can appeal, we can discuss appealing, we can discuss what the board wishes to do in that regard. Obviously, the Superintendent has given her response. We would have the same rights available to us as the other appeal process.
Okay.
If you wanted to pursue both of them in conjunction with each other. And, you know, I'm of the mindset that we should discuss it as a board, and if we feel that we want to take that step, we would, in a friendly manner, advise the manager to do as such.
I'll make a motion that we appeal this decision of holding back the executive session minutes.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a second?
Second, ma'am.
Does anyone want to discuss this further?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that. In Ms. Benton's letter dated December 29th, I'm going to read it verbatim, if that's okay.
Sure.
Because I'm not good at summarizing. So, it's the second paragraph, and this is the basis, I believe, for her denying the request. It simply says, "Be advised that the lawful purpose on October 3rd, 2016, executive session would be defeated by disclosure of the corresponding executive session minutes at this time. Compare Fudi versus Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee, 402 Mass. 179, 1988." It's a case. "The Wilmington Public Schools entered into a separation agreement after this executive session with the subject of the executive session. The separation agreement remains operative through June 2017. Therefore, the purpose for which the school committee entered executive session still remains, and the minutes from the October 3, 2016, executive session must be withheld from disclosure as a public record in their entirety, consistent with Mass. General Law, Chapter 4, Subsection 7, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, until such time as the purpose of the executive session no longer exists. Accordingly, at this time, your request for the executive session minutes is denied." So, I think it's worthwhile to, the school department, Superintendent Benton, the school committee are not taking a position of, "We don't want to." I think, in my opinion, I think that they're taking a position of, "It's inappropriate to reveal those executive session minutes based on the criteria that were described." And so, I don't know, I'm just, I'm offering it out there. I know there's a motion and a second there, but I think we ought to give some consideration to the detail and the, I don't know, I guess the position that the school committee and the Superintendent have taken on this.
Along those lines, it's her opinion that, that they be withheld. I think that we should go through the process of appealing her opinion. It's of my opinion that they should be released, that the agreement has been settled, and because it's been settled, they become public. So we should find out from the Supervisor of Public Records, you know, which way is the right way.
Madam Chair, eventually, you know, being on the board for all executive sessions, eventually, the board's going to vote to release it. It has to get done. So they're going to decide what to release and what not to release. That's what's going to happen, you know, eventually, you know? And I agree with you, I mean, we need to appeal what we need to appeal, but they're obligated to eventually take a vote to release the executive sessions. That doesn't mean they're going to state everything that's stated at that meeting, but they're obligated by law down the road to release them. What they say is another matter, you know? So, just stay tuned.
Madam Chair, I would suggest, and I have not had a specific conversation with Joanne Benton about this, but, you know, my expectation is that this response was based upon consultation with school labor council, and, you know, I suspect, as Selectman Shumpu suggested, that this is, this response is not a response of defiance. I think it's more of a response of trying to avoid potential litigation from former Superintendent Delai and trying to, you know, avoid a problem there.
Okay.
Well, as I said before, I'm just trying to avoid any further costs to the town, so if there's a risk of us, if there's any financial consequences here, I would use caution. Are you suggesting that there perhaps, Jeff, that there perhaps could be consequences?
I don't think that necessarily an opinion from the Supervisor of Records will initiate any financial consequence. I guess if the Supervisor of Records indicates that certain information is public, or in this case, these executive session minutes must be made public, then, you know, then it's at that point that, you know, whether, and again, and I'm not, I'm just speculating here, so I don't want to go too far on a limb, but... here, so I don't want to go too far on a limb, but whether the former superintendent would take action or not is, remains to be seen.
So, I would agree, you know, that I don't think it's defiance, and I do agree with the fact that eventually, these minutes are going to come out, and I do agree with the fact that this memo was probably prepared with legal consults. At the same time, we do have the supervisor of records that is gainfully employed for the state, that is in charge of reviewing this information and for these types of situations. So, I don't see any reason, without being disrespectful to the school side of things, why we couldn't submit an appeal and ask the question for another legal opinion. This is what these people do for a living. So, is it as simple as sending it, sending a letter and asking for an appeal? Or am I simplifying this beyond what it should be? Because that's how I see it.
I'll say this, I'm not opposed. If the majority of the board wishes to proceed with filing an appeal, I think that's, it's an appeal. So, I think Jeff just said it. It's not going to sub, asking for that appeal does not ipso facto put us in a position where we're potentially facing some type of litigation. The results of that appeal, I think, potentially could put us in a challenging situation if that opens up documents that become public that ought not be public. So, you know, we can cross that bridge, I guess, when we get there. If the board votes in favor of doing this, I'm probably going to sit it out, but I'm not going to vote, you know, in opposition. Maybe that's weak, but I don't, my feelings aren't that strong. I don't think we should necessarily proceed, but I hear that the tenor of the board is more towards having it done. I think we have the appeal that's in place for the redacted contract to determine whether or not there's information in that, in that contract that can be made more public and made available to us. I think that will be revealing. I'm not sure what else we're going to find out, but, I'm sorry, that's, I'm rambling now.
I think the minutes were more to know what options were explored as part of the narrative conversations. Did they discuss an escape clause for gainful employment, things of that nature, and kind of what the mindset was going into deriving the agreement? And I think there are residents and members of this board that are struggling to internalize because they don't have any information as to how the separation agreement was derived. Were there options A, B, and C? Was there just option A? We don't, we don't know, because we weren't in the room. So, I think, having those executive session minutes, I think, there is the hope that there would be some additional clarity as to how that separation agreement was formed.
Yeah, I suppose that leads the question. At our last meeting, I know Selectman McCoy asked that an invitation be sent to the entire school committee. I don't know if that was done or not, to come to a future meeting.
Yes, a letter did go out. I have not seen a response.
Let me see this. Okay.
To that point, Mr. Kira, I agree. I think a conversation would cut through a lot of the questions, and maybe I'm wrong, but this...
Well, we've been trying. We've been trying to have that conversation.
That's, to me, is a source of frustration. I think we could just really clear a lot of the air here if we just had a conversation. Yeah.
So, just to kind of bring us back, we do have a motion on the floor. We do have a second, which would be to appeal. Is there any further discussion before I call for the vote? Hearing none. All those in favor to submit an appeal. All those opposed?
All opposed, in opposition.
Okay, so, four, four and one opposed.
Next, under correspondence, is a letter from the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance. This is directed to the Chair of the Board, just announcing that a request for proposal is out. They are seeking the ability to lease space for the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, their Department of Development Services. And there's a number of different communities where they are looking for this space. I won't list them all, but Wilmington is one of many, and the proposals are due on January 26th.
So, Jeff, what's, what's protocol for something like this? I mean, do we, do we apply back and acknowledge receipt? How do you, do we get requests like this all the time? Because I haven't seen something like this before.
Not often. I think it's more of an FYI, just announcing that, you know, if there's a party out there that is looking to provide or submit a proposal on, on space in Wilmington, that, that might happen. But there's no, I don't think there's any required response on, on the part of the board.
Okay.
Next is information related to the 2017 annual town meeting. This is a document that is prepared every year, and I won't go through each date, but certainly some of the key dates. January 30th is the budget presentation. Town elections will be held on the 22nd of April, the town meeting on the 29th. Deadline for submission of petition warrant articles is February 3rd. The board will be asked to sign the warrant on March 13th. The joint hearing of the planning board and the finance committee is March 21st. February 27th, the board will be asked to establish or vote the intentions for laying out of ways. There's actually one way this, that is on the docket this year, and it is, let's see, it is Cheyenne Street, which is off of Concord Street down near 93. Then, beyond the, those particular dates, on the second page, there's the schedule for the finance committee meetings, which begin right after the presentation. January 31st is the first meeting of the finance committee, which is a, covers a number of different issues, including IT, a discussion about the revenue, and the general government budgets, debt, unclassified statutory charges, and insurance accounts, and then it goes on from there. March 13th, Board of Selectmen will have final review of the nonpetition articles, and then, again, the, that's, the board will be asked to sign, consider signing the annual warrant at that time, and then the public hearing is on the 30, 21st.
It's always this busy, but it looks very busy.
Yes, it is. And I would just add that Beverly puts that together every year, so she's the master of the schedule.
You know what you'll be doing for the next two months.
Okay, and, final item under correspondence is a letter from Jane Lyman, Senior Manager at Comcast, and this is more of a ministerial communication. The Comcast is restructuring their ownership, so the announcement here is to indicate that Comcast of Massachusetts One, Inc., is now being folded under or becomes part of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. So, it's really a corporate change. There's no impact in terms of services or rates, a function of their corporate status. Next, under Board to Consider, one of the requirements under the new public records law, which took effect January 1st, is to establish records access officers, and these individuals are the point people when a public records request is made. They would be the ones that would facilitate the production of that record. So, in, in our case, in the statute establishes that the executive officer of the town shall make the appointments at town council's advice. The appointments should be ratified by the Board of Selectmen. I have appointed three individuals on the town side. Sharon George, the town clerk, Rick McCullen, the fire chief for matters related to fire, and Deputy Chief Robert Richter for matters related to the police and dispatch. And then, on the school side, Jackie Raffey, who's the Assistant Director of Administration and Finance, for any matters related to the schools. So, what I would be looking for this evening is a vote of the board to ratify those appointments.
Questions, comments, or a motion to ratify the appointments as read by the manager?
I'd make the motion to ratify the appointments as described by the town manager. Second.
Motion has been made. Seconded any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a recommendation for an appointment to the Cable TV Advisory Task Force. As you know, the committee has been meeting in preparation for the license renewal with Comcast. We currently have, as members on this committee, Denise Casey, the Assistant Town Manager, George Breslin from WCTV, Anne Marie Fiore, the Director of IT at the schools, and Kenver Rosette, Director of IT for the town. It's my suggestion that we also try to include a representative from the town at large. Mr. Lopez has expressed an interest in participating, and in fact, as I understand it, did attend the last meeting of the Cable TV Task Force. Seems to be interested, and so I would recommend his appointment.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to appoint Robert P. Lopez to the Cable TV Advisory Task Force?
I would like to make the motion to appoint Robert Lopez gratefully for him volunteering for his service.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
Seconded any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lopez.
Next is the Board to Consider, candidates for the Bylaw Study Committee. As, as you know, from previous discussions, there is a need to reactivate the inhabitant bylaw study committee, and it was my suggestion at the last meeting of the board that members bring, that each member bring the name of one person forward. I, at this point, have appointed Sharon George, Valerie Gingrich, and also Robert Richter to serve on the committee. So, I'd be looking for representatives from the community at large.
Okay, so, to assist with that, do you want each of us to state our names publicly in any comments, and then...
If you could, yes.
Okay, so, at this time, what I'll do is I'll start to my far left with you, Selectman Shampoo. I will go right down the row, and people can offer comments on the name that they're putting forward, or just a name, whatever you deem to be appropriate, and then we'll collectively take them up to a vote.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I was very grateful last spring, when we had a vacancy on the zoning Board of Appeals, that we had a number of very qualified individuals submit their names for consideration. And at that time, men, I think all of you will remember, there was one gentleman, Francis Oliveri, who, well, at least in my personal opinion, stood out among the applicants. And while he didn't get that appointment last spring, he stayed in my mind, and I had hoped that when some other vacancy occurred in the town, that we'd be able to put his experience, his expertise, his knowledge, and really just his desire to serve, to work. And then this, this office opened. So, I contacted Mr. Oliveri, and he was quick to jump at the chance to serve the town of, town of Wilmington in this capacity. So, I'm delighted to make the suggestion or put forth Mr. Francis Oliveri as, as my appointee.
Great. Thank you. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I'm going to submit a name. I called the office this morning, Dan Adito. I think he'd be an asset to the town. He is a former member of the school committee, and he's a, comes from a great family, he's a wonderful guy, and a very bright man, and I think he'd be an asset to the town. He has a background in accounting, and I think he'll do well. I really do.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Kira?
I'm going to put the name of John Romano. John is an active member of the community, a strong individual. He'd be a great fit for this appointment.
Great. Thank you. Selectmen, no?
I'd like to bring forth the name of Dan Stewart. Dan served the town very well as the fire chief, and longstanding citizen, greatly respected by many, and I think he'll do a great job.
Great. And for my recommendation to Selectman Shampoo's comments regarding the zoning Board of Appeals process that we recently went through, there was a new, new face, new name, a new gentleman that had come through that I had never had the pleasure of meeting, but I was particularly impressed with him. He's new to the community, or relatively new. I thought he was a very kind, sincere gentleman, who, in my opinion, presented himself very well, and I thought offered a lot of intelligence and insight and willingness to serve, and that's Mr. Paul Brozo, who is an attorney by profession and is anxious to get involved with the town of Wilmington as a volunteer. So, I would respectfully and bring forward his name as a recommendation, and I'm honored to do so. And I did speak with Paul, and he's very excited and cannot wait to get started. So, just in summary, I know we need to take the vote, but I just wanted to compliment each of you. I think every single person that has been brought forward is an outstanding choice. Personally, I would have recommended any one of them, but we all, we all took a name, and at this point, I would entertain a motion to appoint these, these people as presented by each of you.
So, moved.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And the second part of that, if, as I had indicated previously, if the board is so inclined to nominate a, an individual from the board to serve in, on this committee...
Would anyone like to step forward and volunteer for that role?
Don't all jump up.
It's like being at church.
Well, I would like to just have an open discussion here. It occurs to me that this happens every 10 years. Is that right?
Yes.
So, that means we would have had this happen in 2007 and in 1997.
Yeah, I think there was a little bit of a, I don't think we're completely on kilter in terms of the 10. It's, there might have been a little difference, but yeah.
Ish. But, but the reason I kind of bring it up was, half in jest, but also half very much sincere, that Mr. McCoy has been a member of this board or a member of town government, geez, I think through all those years, and then maybe some more. So, I think there's a institutional knowledge that's present, just by virtue of having sort of been in the game through these various iterations. And if Mr. McCoy were so inclined, I'd be inclined to nominate him if that's the process that we're following, or at least ask him if he's, if he's interested.
I wouldn't have a problem doing it. I've been involved a long time. You sure you really want me on that? Boy, you don't want to shake round and roll.
Oh, seconded, sure. We want to put it out there.
No, I don't mind if that's, you know, I don't have an issue doing it, and we meet, what, five, six, seven times a month? It's not a problem, right?
I think it would be monthly. There may be instances where it would be a couple of times a month, but, you know, one to two times a month, I would say.
Geez, I appreciate the full support of the board. I don't have a problem doing it.
So, I would make, I'd make that motion, then if Mr. McCoy is available to it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Jeez, if I knew you were that easy, I would have come up with a few more things for you to do.
Roll the dice. You're going to come up with either lucky sevens or snake eyes. It's his choice.
The next item under Board to Consider is acts... The next item on the Board to Consider is access, an access agreement with the MBTA to provide access for their rail line, which is just beyond Grace Drive, right on the Billerica Line. They're looking to do some maintenance and repair. The town has property down there, right on the Shawshin River. It's actually open space, so it falls within conservation. So, conservation also was required to sign off. They will access their work area from the rail line itself, so they won't be going down or accessing it through Grace Drive, but they may have some of their material that winds up temporarily being located on the town's property. So, town council has been working with Valerie Gingrich to develop this temporary license and agreement, and I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen follow suit with a Conservation Commission and authorize this agreement.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Given the Conservation Commission's signing of this agreement, and the fact that this is pushed, put in front of us by town council, and the recommendation of the town manager, I would move to approve and sign the license.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The final item under Board to Consider is, or actually, a series of access license and agreements with the Olin Corporation to conduct some sampling. This is a part of an effort, actually, required by EPA. There's a document referred to as Final Remedial Investigation and Feasibility Study Work Plan that was developed back in 2009, that essentially set out a series of tests that needed to be done. This is part of the assessment phase that Olin has been going through for some time now, really since 2006, when it became a Superfund site. And as I'm told by Jim DiLorenzo, who is the Program Director for EPA on this project, the attempt is to establish the northern boundary of this plume. So, this is the final element in terms of really establishing what the limits of this contamination zone is. So, there's three particular easements, or particular licenses, that Olin is seeking. One deals with three locations along Route 38, just north of Eames Street. The second deals with sites in the right-of-way on Eames Street, and the third deals with an area right at the end of Morse, which is off of Woburn Street. And so, you know, in spite of the fact, and certainly, you know, dealing with Olin in light of the other circumstances, fully appreciate and understand the challenges that we have with them, but I think, in the end, you know, it's important that we work with EPA in terms of trying to fully characterize this Superfund site, and by authorizing these testing locations, that will help facilitate that. I'm told that the expectation is, Olin will have some results that they will provide to EPA by the summer of 2017. That's, you know, at this point, a preliminary estimate, and then it'll take about a year for EPA to go through all the information and, you know, offer comment and so on. And so, it's conceivable by this late summer, early fall of 2018, that EPA will be in a position to shift gears from the assessment phase of this to developing the remediation options.
So, when Jeff had brought this forward in our chairman discussion to set the agenda, obviously, I had a whole host of questions, which Jeff did a great job in answering, and obviously, we're talking about the characterizing of the site, and the cleanup for what has been going on for an extended period of time, and this whole New England Transrail kind of overlaid on this. My concern was just, you know, giving town access to things that would potentially be used to any sort of advantage with the New England Transrail application. So, it's kind of like a catch-22, if you will. And I'm trying to stay focused on the fact that we need to figure out the full scope of where this has kind of migrated to, to be able to establish how to clean it up. And it's difficult to know the scope of the job site and what needs to be done, if they haven't been able to characterize the outer boundary limits, to effectively know that their cleanup is going to reach to the level that it should. So, we're kind of in a little bit of a conundrum, so to speak. And I did pass a comment to Jeff, that it just seems ironic that now these additional testing wells are kind of coinciding. You know, it started in 2009, it's now 2017, and they want to be doing these additional testing wells. So, I have mixed feelings about it. I'm just putting it out there, but at the same time, you know, I want to be able to do what's right in support EPA and their efforts to try and help clean this up, but I just wanted to be candid with all of you to that one-on-one conversation that I had with Jeff during the agenda-setting period. And I had asked Jeff to reiterate, and perhaps you can, Jeff, in terms of talking with town council, and what you've gleaned from your conversations with our legal team, is there an upside or a downside to being cooperative that we should be aware of publicly?
There is, I guess the upside is clearly being able to move the process forward in terms of assessing the site. I would just note, and again, this is based upon conversations with Jim DiLorenzo, that there have been a number of attempts, apparently, to establish the northern boundary. So, wells previously have been located at various spots to try to determine where the end of that contamination zone exists. In each case, the results came back with contaminated groundwater, so in response to that, they extend, if you will, the edge. So, they'll continue to do this until they come to the point where they're getting
No detection.
No detection.
Right.
So, I don't believe, based upon the discussion that I've had with Jim DiLorenzo, that this, the timing of this is related to anything associated with a New England Transrail. I think it just, you know, it's, at least from what I gather, coincidental that, you know, they've done testing before, they're now extending that edge, and it turns out that it now is when they're looking to do that. I also had an email exchange with Mike Webster from GeoInsight, just raising some of the questions that you and I had talked about. And he indicates, in part, that this work is part of the follow-up slash data gap phase of the groundwater investigation work that was described in the RIFS work plan. The need to install these wells was based upon a review of the initial set of groundwatered data that was collected under the RI. Phased investigations are typical under Superfund. You develop an initial scope of work, conduct the investigation, and then develop subsequent focused work scope to evaluate a few areas/issues in greater detail. So, these actual wells/soil borings were not specified in the original RI work plan. They were identified as being necessary after the initial set of RI groundwater characterization activities were completed, and US EPA had a chance to review that data and identify data gaps that required further investigation. So, it is part of the process.
So, that's the determination that I wanted to know. And what I was driving at is that if New England Transrail were to, say, enter into a bona fide purchase and sales agreement with Olin to purchase the property and develop it, typically, for a commercial parcel, there's what's called 21E, which is an environmental assessment. So, I just wanted to make sure that none of this was going to be adding to the 21E file for a New England Transrail to either assist them with their purchase and giving them information. I want to make them work for it, basically, rather than have us give them access to get these boring testing, very similar to where we did testing wells, when we were going to do the purchase for St. Dorothy's. We did some of our own due diligence. So, I think we need to keep our eye on the prize, that, in my opinion, we need to continue to follow through this process with Mr. DiLorenzo and EPA for the betterment of the area, based on the existing issue that we have. And I think it's just a calculated risk that some of this information may be gleaned by other parties that might be interested in the parcel, but we still have a job to do as a community in cleaning up that site. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I completely concur. My knee-jerk reaction to this is, Olin wants a favor from us, you know, now, but keeping the eye on the prize, and it's your phrase, so I give you credit for it, is, you know, Jeff alluded to the possibility that by the, you know, middle to latter part of 2018, we could actually be phasing our discussion and our talk about Olin from investigation to remediation. We actually can start to see a long tunnel, but maybe there's a light at the end of the tunnel whereby that land is not polluted anymore, and the dapple liquid phase stuff, NDMA stuff that's buried in the ground will be coming out, and we'll be removing the pollution, and maybe, just maybe someday, the water there will be consumable again. And the sooner we can get to that point, the better for all, whether it's, you know, present generation or future generation. So, I want to be real cautious, as much as my, like I say, my knee-jerk reaction is to be cautious about giving any extra leeway to Olin, given the circumstances. I want to make sure that we do the right thing for the community, present and future. And if that moves the ball forward, getting us closer to remediation sooner, then we most certainly have an obligation to do so. So, I'm anxious to do that.
Just a question. I don't know if you can answer it or not, but you alluded to the fact that they're trying to find the ending point. So, if they do these monitoring wells, and they find out that there are contaminants there, will they continue to push it out further and further?
Yes. And just to be clear, this is not the first time that Olin has requested these types of agreements. There were similar agreements that were done a number of years ago, prior to my serving as town manager. In fact, there's some correspondence here dated earlier in the year, that was actually directed to my predecessor, talking about some investigation, notifying us of some sampling that was being done on old wells that had been previously authorized. So, this is an ongoing process. I would just also comment, though, in terms of the time scale here, it certainly will be welcome news to be able to transition from the investigation phase to the remediation phase. My expectation is that when we get to that turning point, it's going to, there's going to be a fair amount of time, and I don't have an exact amount of time, but I'm suspecting, you know, a year or more, where there will be this process of looking at options A, B, and C, and D, and however many they come up with, and then ultimately, through a series of public meetings, as well as work that EPA and Olin's consultants do, ultimately come down to that preferred option. And then, you know, so that could be, you know, once we get to that phase, a year or two out, and then, once that happens, you know, we're probably talking years, 40, 50, 60 years, for this, you know, cleanup process to actually take place. So, I mean, I don't want to be the damper on the party, but it is, it's going to be a long, long process.
So, I know there's a very detailed document here, and I don't want to belabor points, but it's more of a tactical question. When they put in these wells and they get the testing, I'm assuming they go through the town, they let us know when they're going to be on-site and doing any sort of work there, and minimizing any sort of disruption. How are the results handled, and are they under any sort of obligation to work with the town in terms of providing those results, and not just broadcasting them any which way they want? Is there a certain protocol for the results, and how those are handled, and who gets access to those? Is it a public document? How does that work, such that, could a New England Transrail request those test results and be given that information?
I would expect that they could. Ultimately, so the results are, the samples are taken, and there's a protocol in terms of how those are handled. Ultimately, there's a lab that will evaluate the samples. The information gets reported back to EPA, and then typically, there's, EPA will direct Olin or their consultant to issue a report that describes the nature of the results. And when we get that report, we forward it to our consultant, GeoInsight, to take a look at, there's usually an opportunity, or there is an opportunity, for any comments about that report that comes back, and that's how it plays out.
What's the timeframe of something like this, a sampling, to get the results? Is it weeks, months, years?
Well, in this case, it's my understanding that the results would come back probably in the summer.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or any motion that anyone would want to put forth to grant this access license?
Well, I'll make a motion that we grant the access license.
Anyone want to make a second?
Sure.
Second? Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. Four, four, and one against.
So, Madam Chair, I would suggest, just because there's six documents that we can, I can just have the board sign them after the meeting?
Sure, sure. Okay. Public comments? Hearing none? Okay. Moving on to new business, I'll start to my right.
Thank you very much. I just want to, again, wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I'm just hoping that it's a healthy one for everybody, and I hope it's a really positive year for the town of Wilmington.
Just want to echo those comments. Happy New Year, and a healthy one.
Great. To my left.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to do the same as my colleagues, but I'd like to bring up a quick point. I'll be just very brief. I read an editorial in the Lowell Sun that State Senator Eldridge is going to be introducing legislation to basically make Massachusetts a safe haven for illegal aliens. That really bothered me. Do I really think President Trump is going to get rid of 20 million illegal aliens? No. But we have 2, 3 million illegal aliens in this country committing rape, murder, armory. And there's no way in hell we should, I would hope to think, our legislative delegation would support that, because basically, we're just giving them a free card to do anything they want. And it just, I bring that up because it is bothersome to read that. And, you know, I know he's a big liberal Democrat, and I'm totally opposed to something like that. I'm not looking for, you know, 10 minutes of fame or anything like that. I'd be happy to make a motion to send it to our legislative delegation, but I think the message is loud and clear to our legislative delegation at the state level that they'd be opposed to this, because that is totally insane. I think that's really, a really horrible, horrible law if they passed. Well, I think it's going to pass. I would hope to think not, but I've seen stranger things happen in the state that sometimes you can't fathom or believe. So, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to our legislative delegation state, that they oppose the bill and the law that the state senator from, I believe, Lexington, Eldridge, is going to introduce. I think it's horrible. Basically, giving the Commonwealth a safe haven, and basically, a safe zone for illegal aliens in the state. aliens in the state.
Well, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not disagreeing with Mr. McCoy, but I'd be hesitant to vote on something. I haven't read the article or seen the legislation, so I would perhaps suggest that we table that, if we could get our hands on the letter, the article, and the legislation with that.
I have no problem doing that. Respect to my colleagues, yeah, I'd definitely table it, hopefully tip a motion at the next meeting. At least we're sending a message to our state reps and our state senator that represents us, you know, to message loud and clear that this is horrible, you know? Hey, we're trying to work with President Trump, hopefully put home to something, and we're gonna make it the whole state a safe haven? That's, that's crazy, you know?
To Selectman Mendel's point and your agreement, we'll table it and revisit it.
Sure, I'll take that back and table it.
Okay, okay.
I'm sure we'll hear a lot by then, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Greg. It was a good observation, a good suggestion. Mike, if you can get the, the actual language of the, of the bill that the, that the senator's putting forth, I'd love to read it.
Of course, I think I left the editorial at home. It's an arrest to get here, it's on my desk.
My two comments that I wanted to make are specifically, I wanted to thank the volunteers that we appointed this evening to the Bylaw Committee. All of those individuals, as, as were observed by my colleagues, are very much up to the task, and, and, you know, they're volunteers, and they're not getting paid, and they're just doing it for the good of the town, so they deserve our respect and our admiration, and certainly our thanks, and that includes you, Mr. McCoy. And the last thing is, as maybe Ms. O'Connell will refer, on the 20th, in a couple of weeks, the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting and Conference will be taking place in Boston at the Hines. I do intend to, to, to attend it both Friday and Saturday. I haven't seen the full agenda yet, although every year, they jam-pack two business days with the equivalent of six business days of, of agenda items, so it's, it's a tiring two days, but it's always worthwhile, at least worthwhile to me, and hopefully worthwhile to the town of Wilmington. So I'm hopeful that my colleague Judy's gonna be there, and I think, Jeff, you're planning on being there as well. We often hear from the governor or his representatives, and I think the governor is slated to, to speak at the MMA meeting, and we'll start to get some preliminary understandings of his budgetary priorities for the fiscal year. So it's an important meeting, and I look forward to going, and I'll report back after it's over. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have anything major to report, other than to wish everyone a very Happy New Year in 2017, as I started the meeting out with, and I think this is gonna be a fantastic year, I can feel it already. So lots of hope, lots of wonderful things happening in town, and stay tuned, the best is yet to come. So moving on to important dates, please.
So the first item is through January 13th, we have curbside collection of Christmas trees. January 16th, town offices will be closed in honor of Martin Luther King Day. January 23rd is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here at 7:00 PM. January 30th is the special meeting of the board to receive my budget presentation for fiscal 2018. February 1st, Finance Committee meeting, Town Hall. It's actually February 1st or February, January 31st? I think it's 31st, isn't it? Yeah, I think it's, so it's January 31, the first meeting of the Finance Committee, Room 9 here, will review budget, the information technology, revenue, and general government. And then the next meeting is February 2nd, Planning, Conservation, Building Inspector, and Board of Appeals, Board of Health. And then January 3rd is the last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion in the warrant for the April 29th, 2017 town meeting.
Great. Jeff, not to spot you on this, but is there a spot on our website that if people wanted to get an idea of all the meetings relative to this whole town meeting, budgetary process, essentially like that page that you and Bev put together, is there gonna be any sort of, will it be on the town calendar? Do you know what I'm talking about?
All the dates will be on the calendar.
It'll be on the, on the...
Yeah, not necessarily in the format that you see it presented, but there will be, yes.
Correct, but it'll be on the town calendar, so if people wanted to look on the town calendar, each of those Finance Committee meetings would be posted, per usual. Okay, thank you. All right. So the time has come for a motion to adjourn. Anyway.
Show move.
Second. Okay? All those in favor? Unanimous. Good night. Thank you.[1792.83]